Called the number back. They never called me again. Well, that was a no call.
Hey Mayor.
Oh, hers is the longest, right?
Going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council order. Today is Monday, August 3rd, 2015. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Counselor Richard Rowley, Community of Christ Church.
Our Heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful that we have an opportunity of service to you this night. We are very thankful for the people that are on the council. Be with them as they make decisions, as they ponder what is best for the city of Oskaloosa. Be with the visitors, that truly they may witness how government works and how wonderful it is that we have the opportunity this night. Be with us through your spirit, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Caliguri?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ben Zettin?
Yeah.
First Day?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving into the front end of the agenda, this is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. Community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Ask to keep statements brief. Time will be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so concerns can be properly researched and perhaps even answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak? I will clarify that there is one item in here where we are talking about receiving and filing of the branding development and marketing action plan for the city of Oskaloosa. I'm not planning on having public comment at that time, so if you wish to speak to it, now would be the time to do that. Name and address, please.
Name and address. Karen Hafner, and I live at 1722 Teal Lane in Unionville. Okay, I'm the Main Street Director. I know most of you. And I just want to address the branding process a little bit. Before I start, I want to thank the city, some local businesses, the Main Street businesses, for your support through this process, whether it been financially or support letters. Appreciate it. I'll keep this very brief, because what I wanted to talk to you about was the brand and how it came about, and the leadership team. The brand leadership team consists of 17, 18 people who have given up hours and hours of their time to come up with a process that they think will enhance Oskaloosa. And one of the things that we've talked about more than anything is that we are not trying to change the history of Oskaloosa, we just want to add to the history of Oskaloosa. And we feel this action plan gives us great direction to do that. We hope you took the time to read it, and look forward to any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Jensen, 2109 Edinson Drive. I'm the Executive Director of Mahaska Community Development Group. I'm also here as a member of the brand leadership team, as many of us are. I don't think that we're all probably going to stand up for and talk, but maybe we will. I guess I just wanted to say a few things just in support of what's been going on with the brand action plan. You know, from a really broad economic development perspective, I think that this is a real key component of what we're trying to do. We've, previous times that I've been here, I've talked about the Mahaska community vision and priorities that development partner organizations have put together, as well as representatives from the city and the county. And through that, we went through the visioning process and establishing some eight top priorities as far as economic and community development. And really, I went back through this plan and took a look at it, and really, it's a key component of six of the eight top priorities. So when we talk about economic development, I think this is a real key piece to it. Additionally, I'll just mention I'm on board with Mahaski Young Professionals. It's a group of young people looking to make a future here in Oskaloosa. There's some of us here in the audience as well. And when we had a presentation on it and discussed it, generally, people just loved it. It's an exciting thing. I think people love to see kind of a future vision for what this town could be. And when we talk about wanting to attract and obtain high-quality employees to our businesses here, when we talk about wanting to bring visitors to spend money in our businesses downtown, and when we talk about wanting to increase investment in our downtown facilities, we know we have a beautiful downtown, but how do we increase that investment? I think this is a key component for it. So, I could talk for a long time about it, but just wanted to say my support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kathy Stahl. I live at 115 K Avenue East here in Oskaloosa, and I just wanted to express my support for the brand leadership plan that you have. I moved to Oskaloosa from Nebraska in 2008, and it was the best decision I made. Not only do I love my job at Mahaska Health Partnership, I'm the Marketing and Development Director, but I love this community. I knew it was special right away. Shortly after moving here, I did become involved in the Chamber of Commerce. I felt it so important, and I loved what this community was doing, that I volunteered not only on the Chamber Board, I became involved in Main Street. And in 2014, was named Main Street Volunteer of the Year. I love what Oskaloosa is doing, I love the special events, I love the community feel that we have. You'll see me volunteering. I'm at Sweet Corn Serenade every year. I volunteer work at Christmas, Light of Christmas Parade. So I want you to know how deeply I feel about this community. I was privileged enough to be a part of the brand leadership team, and was excited and happy to donate my time and effort as part of, as being in marketing and development for, since I graduated from college, I hate to say, almost 30 years ago. But I was excited about the process. I thought it was a great process that we went through. I'm now on the brand leadership team. I truly believe that this plan will enhance what we already have in place. Oskaloosa is a wonderful, wonderful city, really has so much to offer. Being able to brand this community and kind of pull together the pieces and move forward, it's something I'm real excited to be a part of. So I just wanted to let you know how much I support this, and hope that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Val, girls, 2120, Joe Lane. Speaking on behalf of the Chamber, the Chamber is not directly involved with the brand leadership team, but we are a full supporter of the plan. Our tourism committee has looked at some of the tourism proponents, and we're really excited about seeking some of those and owning them. The Chamber's mission is to improve, promote, and enhance the business environment and quality of life in Mahaski County and Oskaloosa. And as you look through that brand leadership action plan, you'll see that all of those things fall into our mission as the Chambers.
Thank you.
Breaking news, apparently. I'm Aaron Riggs. I'm a new homeowner at 427 North Ninth Street. Here speaking to show support for you to receive and file the branding development and marketing action plan. I'm a volunteer on the brand leadership team and gave input throughout the branding and development process. In a nutshell, as a young person in the community, there's a few things that I have a vision here for, and which make me, makes me in favor of this brand action plan and the items in it. One is to give local residents reasons to stay local. My hope is that residents will not just work here, but also have fun and be entertained here, and ultimately, spend their money and more time here. Another is to attract more young people to the area. A question I ask myself is, what can be done to make our town more attractive, a more attractive place to raise a family? What attracts younger families, younger individuals to the area to help grow its population? I think the action plan has some pretty good ideas for addressing that. And third, I hope our town will remain relevant in a changing world, which could mean making some modifications and updates to our town square. For example, can we make it more functional, or more modern, more applicable to today's standards for concerts or events? But do so in a way that respects the history and historical icons that are there now. I want to, I want to maintain the historical elements of Oskaloosa, but make sure we are also adapting to the demands of our diverse and expanding community. So, I believe this brand plan is a start in the right direction for those things, and I ask for you to support, support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Jorgensen. I live at 116 Highland Avenue. I am here as an executive committee member for the Mahaski Young Professionals. We heard the presentation for the branding committee, and it sounded so exciting. We were so excited about what it could do for us as young professionals, trying to attract and maintain young professionals, individuals, and families to the city of Oskaloosa. Just wanted to share my support and hope that you guys will support it as well.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Wilson, 805 North H Street. My team members and colleagues have really said a lot of the same things, and I agree with 100% of it. I do want to add, I'm the Marketing Technical Director at William Penn University, and I feel that these students and this community are at a place where we're really excited for our students to be part of the community, and I know they want to be part of it. And we've given them lots of opportunities. I think this action plan is going to just open up that even wider. And so we look forward to, when we have graduates, they become alumni, we want them to stay in Oskaloosa or be part of this community. And this is a really great way for them to do that.
Thank you.
Well, I thought I'd better stand up and say something. My name's Steve Burnett. I'm at 1603 South Park Avenue here in Oskaloosa. I see all these young folks talking about this, and I'm called a lot of things, but usually not young. So, maybe I thought I'd give the other perspective a little bit. There's nothing wrong with, I mean, I understand the plan's 114 pages, if I'm not mistaken. There's a lot there to go through. Understand that we start over here somewhere with the plan, and probably end up somewhere over here, but the key is, is we have to start. If we don't start with something, we never get here, or somewhere in between. So I think it's important to at least give the opportunity to start, and somewhere we'll all find a way to meet in the middle, so that's my, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Moving on. Next item is the consent agenda. These are all items that are usually routine in nature, no discussion anticipated. I did want to draw your attention to item D, where we have the approval of a pay request, $107,667.21 to Cornerstone Excavating for the Third Avenue East Reconstruction Project. And items E and F. E is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on the plan specs, form of contract, estimated cost, and advertisement of bids on a sanitary and storm sewer improvements project for South L, South M, and Penn Boulevard area. And then also, consider a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on plan specs, form of contract, estimated cost, ordering the advertisement for a B Avenue East pavement rehabilitation project. Both of those are going to be on September 8th. Do we have a motion supporting the consent agenda? Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Item 6, announcing vacancies that we have in various boards and commissions. There are two of them here. Building Code Board of Appeals, there's one vacancy to fill upon appointment, serves at the pleasure of the mayor. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Three males and one female currently serving, there is one vacancy. Historic Preservation Commission, we have one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31, 2016, and two vacancies for alternate members. This is a seven-member board that meets as needed. There are two males and four females currently serving, with three vacancies, and two for alternate members. And after that, into the rest of the regular agenda. 7A, is considering a resolution directing sale of a $4,150,000 general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2015A. I understand Suzanne Gerlach is here to do a presentation.
All right, there's two handouts being distributed right now, thank you.
For the benefit of the camera, name of who you work for.
Suzanne Gerlach, from Public Financial Management out of Des Moines, Iowa, the financial advisor for the city of Oskaloosa, with good news today. We went to market today, as the mayor mentioned, to price $4,150,000 worth of general obligation bonds for the new fire station, for the pumper truck, and also to current refund some outstanding gains for some savings today. As part of the bond issuance process, the city did go through Moody's rating, and so it's been, I think since 2010, since we've gone through that exercise, so I thought it might be beneficial to kind of talk about the rating for the council's benefit tonight. The first handout I'm going to talk about is the colorful chart. Last year, Moody's Investors Service revamped their general obligation methodology for rating local governments across the United States. As many of you may know, the ratings go from the highest AAA down to AA1, AA2, AA3, A1, A2, A3, and BAA and below that we're not going to talk about. AAA is the highest rating that a city can maintain in the United States from Moody's, and the city was rated a AA3. So, what I've done is I've taken the scorecard. The scorecard kind of lays out the metrics and the different areas that Moody's will evaluate, the creditworthiness of the city. First area is economy and tax base. That's going to be the socioeconomic indicators, it's going to be just the overall tax base size of the city. That's 30% of the rating. 30% of the rating is also based on finance. That's going to be your cash reserves and your general fund. It's going to be, you know, your deficits and your, how you budget. Are you budgeting on a deficit annually? Are you building surpluses? Looking at your operations and a five-year history of operations. 20% of the rating is based on management. The institutional framework is a statewide rating for cities in the state of Iowa, and we're fortunate to get a AAA rating in the state of Iowa as a city, based on the fact that you can't, you know, can't file bankruptcy, debt service levies are unlimited, certain things like that, give a AAA rating. And then debt and pension obligations. 10% is based on the city's debt, 10% is based on IPRs or pension debt, as the city does participate in municipal police and fire pension fund and the IPRs fund. Overall, the score, and the scorecard, when we just put the numbers in here and spit them out, I've kind of color-coded everything in orange, is where the city stacked up. So as you can see, what's really kind of lagging behind is the economy and the tax base. The city of Oskaloosa is relatively small for such a high rating, and so that's going to push us down to the A category. The $1.4 billion of tax base is where the As start, and go down from there, and the city of Oskaloosa is $518 million. So, you know, roughly one-third of the size for just an A category, so very small to get such a high rating into the AA category. And then the socioeconomic indicators, you know, at an A as well. For finances, AAA. The city has very strong cash reserves. Moody's was very impressed with the continued buildup of cash, cash funding projects, drawing down the cash reserves, but planning thoughtfully, and you have, as a city, adopted policies and procedures stating your intent for fund balance, and they view that favorably as well. And then, you know, the five-year operating history, you've been maintaining your budgets, and again, the AAA statewide rating. And pensions, the city's debt is in the AA category, and then when we start adding pensions, Moody's does view IPRs and municipal police and fire statewide as moderately underfunded. And that is kind of a statewide systemic rating that the city doesn't have much control over. So, my summary of this slide is that where the city has the ability to make a difference, you're very highly rated, and the things that maybe you have a little bit less control over are the things that are kind of holding that rating back. So when we put in all the numbers, and we hit F9 to calculate, the scorecard spits out a AA2. And so, the actual rating was a AA3, so that tells me that Moody's did think that, you know, the smaller size of the city was something to take account. There's been, you know, small but stable growth, but not as much growth as maybe they would like to see to get maybe up to that AA2 level. And again, the pension situation, I think are the driving factors that came to the final AA3 outcome, which is still a very, very good rating. Any questions on just the rating? And I did also include the Moody's rating report, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. I will just quickly read, in Moody's opinion, what would make the rating go up? Is a significant expansion of the city's tax base, that means large valuation growth. I'm excited to hear the project Main Street is on the agenda tonight. That's going to be a credit positive. We did talk about all the studies and the branding study that the city was doing with Moody's, and they view that very favorably for spurring economic development activity. And improved socioeconomic indices, so, you know, again, tax base. What can make the rating go down? That would be a deterioration of the city's tax base, so that means if valuations were to decline, and substantial reduction in operating fund reserves. So, you know, right now, I think the general fund's around 40% cash balance, and if that does start to decline, then Moody's is going to take notice.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
You're referring to AA2, AA3. I just got a scorecard here that...
Yes.
AAA, what is the 2, 3's?
So, 1 is the highest, 3 is the lowest, in the AA range. So, this is just in the range.
Okay, so we're still in AA, there's a range in AA.
Yes, yes. Yeah, AAA, and then you're the AA ranger, AA1, AA2, AA3. Yes. All right, any questions? All right. So, now to the bids, right? So we had positive information with the rating. The bonds were issued as bank-qualified. We had seven firms that placed a bid today, which normal, I would say average is four to five, so you had a large number of bidders. That included 31 firms across the nation. Robert W. Baird had a really large syndicate there, all of page two, he had 22 participating firms. The winning bid came from Piper Jaffray, out of their Kansas City office. They do the bank-qualified for Piper Jaffray. When we, when we look at how the bids come in, when it's a good day in the market, we can tell it's priced right when the bids are really close together. And I would point out that on page one, there's only five basis points, or .05% difference between the number one bid and the number four bid. That means they were competing very strongly to buy the bonds for the city today. So I would say that that's a good day in the market. When we compare to the AAA, in the municipal bond market, we use the AAA MMD AAA scale to see where the best of the best are pricing. The city only priced nine basis points over AAA MMD. For AA3, I would expect that to be 20 to 25 basis points, so priced very, very well, very close to AAA MMD, so that's really good news. I'm happy to report that we just issued $4 million over 20 years at 2.33% interest. That's excellent. I was very, very pleased with pricing today. Any questions for me?
If you told us one thing we were doing great, and one thing we were doing poorly, what would it be?
Oh, that's a good question. I think that you have exceptional management, your staff, that's who I work with. I work with cities of all sizes across the state of Iowa. I think that they think, they think realistically, but they also think long-term, and I think that's important. I think that, we're having thoughtful conversations about what the future looks like, and I think that's really healthy. And one thing you can improve on, I would say, in my opinion, the city does not utilize TIF maybe as much as others. I think that's an area, when we're talking about economic development, I think that Oskaloosa maybe isn't taking advantage of that opportunity as much as maybe other cities around the state are to capture the growth and to use it as a real tool to finance economic development, and help be way for all of the city and the county and the school district. Good question. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, as PFM is your financial advisor, I would recommend that you award the bonds to the winning bidder, Piper Jaffray and Company, out of Kansas City, Missouri, at a true interest cost of 2.3342%.
Anybody want to call it their motion?
Don't move.
Nicely, nicely done. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any discussion on this, before we vote?
Mayor and council, I mentioned to all of you in an update that I plan on giving the same presentation that I gave to Moody's at an upcoming meeting, so that we could share some of that information with you in the public as well. It's a nice opportunity for, for me to talk about the good things that are happening in Oskaloosa, so I just wanted to remind you that'll be coming up probably in next month or so.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Going to item B. Consider a resolution authorizing the redemption of the outstanding general obligation bonds from the city of Oskaloosa, state of Iowa, dated December 6, 2006, and directing notice to be given. A portion of the proceeds from that $4,150,000 bond issue is going to be used to call $660,000 of the Series 2006 bonds, and this will be about $27,000 in interest costs saved by refinancing. Do we have a motion supporting that?
It's moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C, considering a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for cutting and removal of weeds by the city of Oskaloosa. It's the time for a public hearing on levying the special assessment. There are seven properties here. Certified notices were sent to each property owner, and a notice was published in the Oskaloosa Herald. So if approved, the property owner will have 30 days to pay for the weed cutting in the city clerk's office, and then after the 30 days, it would be assessed to their property taxes with a payment schedule of one year and 9% interest. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who cares to speak to this? Seeing done, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion supporting the resolution to levy the special assessment?
It's moved.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, the property on Fifth Avenue West. Are we going to tear that thing down, or what?
That property has been condemned, so it'll work its way through the system.
So you just can't go in and just...
Not unless we want to outlay the cash. We, obviously, they still have property rights, and they have to have their day in court. But I think that's the idea, is it's already condemned.
We have filed a lawsuit against them, but Mike Borman has filed an answer on their behalf. We are talking with Mike. Quite frankly, they've kind of made a suggestion to us, but I think there are a lot of back taxes owing on the property right now that kind of stand in the way of an immediate resolution of the property itself.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, consider a motion to receive and file the branding development and marketing action plan for the city of Oskaloosa. This item is being presented by the city manager for the purpose of sharing information with the mayor and city council. The branding development and marketing action plan was developed... Action Plan for the city of Oskaloosa. This item is being presented by the city manager for the purpose of sharing information with the mayor or city council. The Branding Development and Marketing Action Plan was developed through a collaborative process between Roger Brooks International and the Oskaloosa Community Representatives. Study was funded by private-public partnership, and the city's contribution to the effort was $10,000. The recommendations made in the plan are based on the information provided to Roger Brooks by many caring and concerned citizens, research, best practices in other locations, and the findings of Oskaloosa's previous plans and studies, as well as the Roger Brooks experience and expertise in Hesta Nation branding, development, and marketing. The results and success derived from the implementation of this branding action plan are dependent among many factors, including the time, effort, funding ability, and cooperation of those involved in the implementation. So staff is recommending that the city council receive and file this report, and continue to support the efforts to implement the recommendations included in the branding action plan with the identified partners that are named in the document. So do we have a motion supporting that?
Removed.
Okay, any discussion?
I guess, two things. Number one, it says we put in $10,000. Mike, do you know what the total cost of the study was?
$82,000.
How much?
$82,000. And a portion of that was funded by a grant from Main Street. I don't recall how much of that was... How much of the 82?
Twenty.
Twenty of that was funded by grants. And then the rest was private-public partnership opportunities.
I guess my second comment was just appreciation to everybody that spent so many hours working on it. I think it's been a lot of good work, read through it, a lot of information in there, and a lot of time to complete it, obviously, or to work through it, but I do appreciate everybody's efforts in the community to work on.
Just for clarification, because the pony was out of the barn on this one, we're not moving the bandstand with this, correct?
Correct.
All right. I just want to get that out there. We're not moving the bandstand.
Are you kidding me?
It's going to stay. It's going to stay.
So I've been telling everybody wrong all this time?
I guess. Just a couple of things on that, because I had a lot of people come up and talk to me about it. And I know that, I don't think the Roger Brooks team probably handled this as well as what they could have. They should have got on top of this right from the beginning. They wanted to sign off with one voice, and they should have all talked, and they didn't. And for all the people that didn't want to move the bandstand, I hope you guys will come back to the table. And I'm not talking about moving it or leaving it or any of that. But there are so many good things in here at its heart, that's what we need to be looking at. So I don't want you to look at this plan and say, oh, Roger Brooks, you know, I'm just going to throw up my hands and walk away from it. Come back to the table, because we're all working to make Oskaloosa better. And this is one of those things that we all need to work on together. So I know there was a lot of tension here over this, but we all want this town to get better, and everybody's working for that. So I hope those people that were against the bandstand will come back to the table again.
Other thoughts and comments? Since I'm on the brand leadership team, I don't see the need to do a lot of bragging on what a great committee I'm on. But everybody else does a really great job.
Well, I agree with what Steve Brant said tonight. You know, you've got to get started, so it's a start. And it's a roadmap, so...
And there's some things behind the scene already starting to go that direction. And this is just one of many things that we need to attack. I mean, by no means is anybody up here saying, this is the saver, this is the one plan that's going to work. There are several areas that I know this council is going to be coming up in the next months, that it's just, there are several major issues that we need to attack, and this is one of them. This is a big piece for this town, and we absolutely need this. So thanks to all you guys that put this together.
Other comments or questions? We've got a motion to receive and file. Roll call, please.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
No.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G, considering an ordinance deleting section 12.04.040 and 12.04.050 from the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, second reading. Staff is proposing to delete those two sections relating to the official street name map. Currently, city staff, in conjunction with Mahaska County GIS Department, have all city names recorded on a GIS database, and this database is available to the public and displays all current street names within the city of Oskaloosa. Therefore, since the street name data is currently being managed within a GIS system, an official street name map is no longer necessary. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Removed.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
No.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, consider a motion to receive and file the Branding Development and Marketing Action Plan for the city of Oskaloosa. This item is being presented by the city manager for the purpose of sharing information with the mayor or city council. The Branding Development and Marketing Action Plan was developed through a collaborative process between Roger Brooks International and the Oskaloosa Community Representatives. Study was funded by private-public partnership, and the city's contribution to the effort was $10,000. The recommendations made in the plan are based on the information provided to Roger Brooks by many caring and concerned citizens, research, best practices in other locations, and the findings of Oskaloosa's previous plans and studies, as well as the Roger Brooks experience and expertise in Hesta Nation branding, development, and marketing. The results and success derived from the implementation of this branding action plan are dependent upon many factors, including the time, effort, funding ability, and cooperation of those involved in the implementation. So staff is recommending that the city council receive and file this report, and continue to support the efforts to implement the recommendations included in the branding action plan with the identified partners that are named in the document. So do we have a motion supporting that?
Removed.
Okay, any discussion?
I guess, two things. Number one, it says we put in $10,000. Mike, do you know what the total cost of the study was?
$82,000.
How much?
$82,000. And a portion of that was funded by a grant from Main Street. I don't recall how much of that was... How much of the 82?
Twenty.
Twenty of that was funded by grants. And then the rest was private-public partnership opportunities.
I guess my second comment was just appreciation to everybody that spent so many hours working on it. I think it's been a lot of good work, read through it, a lot of information in there, and a lot of time to complete it, obviously, or to work through it, but I do appreciate everybody's efforts in the community to work on.
Just for clarification, because the pony was out of the barn on this one, we're not moving the bandstand with this, correct?
Correct.
All right. I just want to get that out there. We're not moving the bandstand.
Are you kidding me?
It's going to stay. It's going to stay.
So I've been telling everybody wrong all this time?
I guess. Just a couple of things on that, because I had a lot of people come up and talk to me about it. And I know that, I don't think the Roger Brooks team probably handled this as well as what they could have. They should have got on top of this right from the beginning. They wanted to sign off with one voice, and they should have all talked, and they didn't. And for all the people that didn't want to move the bandstand, I hope you guys will come back to the table. And I'm not talking about moving it or leaving it or any of that. But there are so many good things in here at its heart, that's what we need to be looking at. So I don't want you to look at this plan and say, oh, Roger Brooks, you know, I'm just going to throw up my hands and walk away from it. Come back to the table, because we're all working to make Oskaloosa better. And this is one of those things that we all need to work on together. So I know there was a lot of tension here over this, but we all want this town to get better, and everybody's working for that. So I hope those people that were against the bandstand will come back to the table again.
Other thoughts and comments? Since I'm on the brand leadership team, I don't see the need to do a lot of bragging on what a great committee I'm on. But everybody else does a really great job.
Well, I agree with what Steve Brant said tonight. You know, you've got to get started, so it's a start. And it's a roadmap, so...
And there's some things behind the scene already starting to go that direction. And this is just one of many things that we need to attack. I mean, by no means is anybody up here saying, this is the savior, this is the one plan that's going to work. There are several areas that I know this council is going to be coming up in the next months, that it's just, there are several major issues that we need to attack, and this is one of them. This is a big piece for this town, and we absolutely need this. So thanks to all you guys that put this together.
Other comments or questions? We've got a motion to receive and file. Roll call, please.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
No.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G, considering an ordinance deleting section 12.04.040 and 12.04.050 from the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, second reading. Staff is proposing to delete those two sections relating to the official street name map. Currently, city staff, in conjunction with Mahaska County GIS Department, have all city names recorded on a GIS database, and this database is available to the public and displays all current street names within the city of Oskaloosa. Therefore, since the street name data is currently being managed within a GIS system, an official street name map is no longer necessary. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Removed.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Caligery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, that gets us to the end of the regular part of the agenda. Reports from city staff. City manager, anything?
No, mayor.
Okay. City clerk?
Nothing.
Okay. City attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Behind that, we have an opportunity for reporting on the actions of various boards and committees that members of the council are appointed to or sit on. So I'll take the opportunity to go through that next. Mahaska County Conference Board, that's easy. We haven't met since the last report. 911 system, Tom?
Unless Aaron knows something, I don't know. We're still waiting on the 28E agreement, so I'm not sure. It seemed to get buried there somewhere, but maybe it's just dealing with the paperwork. I have nothing that says it's not going to happen, but...
And when you talk about the 28E agreement, what does that try to do?
A new agreement between the county and the city to combine... I've got to stop the thing. To combine the processes with emergency management.
Okay.
Right now, everything is still operating the same as it was.
Okay, fair enough. Enterprise Zone Commission, Doug Yates?
We have not met since the last update. Nothing to report.
Okay. Housing Trust Fund Committee, Joe?
We just had a meeting today. We had a request for a demo of a home on Sea Avenue West, I believe it was house number 517, or 14. It's on the corner of Sea Avenue West. Sea and, I forgot the name of it, but anyways, that's the house that caught on fire on the corner. Green, stucco building, two-story home. And someone requested help with the demo to level the building. And they're going to replace with those duplex homes, with the garage, two garages in the middle. That's the plan. I think they're a two-bedroom home. Yeah. So, a little cleanup there.
Okay. Oskaloosa Area Chamber and Development Group, I sit on that. I guess last week, maybe it's been two weeks ago now, that there was a planning session that was done, the annual planning. Some people would refer to it as a retreat, but that took place. Probably the most noteworthy is the formation of a tourism committee, which has a number of members on it that have a vested interest in bringing tourism to Oskaloosa. And so it's good to see that kind of action happening. Joint County Mahaska Disaster Services and Emergency Planning Administration, long name, Aaron?
Haven't met.
Okay. We'll try another one. Joint Law Enforcement Center Board?
Have not met.
Yeah, two for two. Mahaska County Agency on Aging?
Yes, we meet monthly on that one. I'd like to put a plug in for Mahaska County Outreach. We just received a check from them to the agency for $1,124. And this is for bag sales that they have every month. And I don't know if anybody's aware of this, but the Outreach, which is a local thrift shop here in town, does this every month for different 501(c's) in Mahaska County. And the only organization I can think of that's national that gets a check from them every so many months is the Salvation Army.
And then, we also have a committee meeting scheduled for August 5, which is Wednesday, to discuss the changes that were made in the last draft of the 208E agreement. And I think the rest of the council should know that I think we're pretty close to being able to have a recommendation to you on August 17. And so, that would be a meeting that would be held at 4:00, jointly with the water board, to discuss the recommendation from that committee. So, wanted to give you a quick update on that. In addition, we had a public projects committee meeting, where we talked about sewer, the L&amp;M project, and Penn Boulevard. We as staff were looking for some direction on private line issue. We got that resolved. And then, we were discussing the playground at Vanderwilt, and staff's recommendation to remove that based on some of the concerns that our insurance company had, as well as the playground being obsolete, essentially. So, staff recommended removal of that. The committee did, in fact, support that, but I did say to the committee that I had not had an opportunity to discuss that with council member Versteg, whose district that's in. So he and I have been having conversations about that. Then lastly, we briefly touched upon the Mid-American Energy LED conversion of their lights. And so, what I was doing was just giving the committee an update, saying, hey, we have a lot more work to do on this before it comes back to the city council. So it was just a quick update about the concept of fully evaluating the system as it exists today, and whether or not we should be, should we be replacing the poles at all, any of the lights at all? Should we be looking at making an investment of our own where, long-term, it potentially saves the taxpayers money? And so, that's one of those longer-term projects we need to get on top of, but I at least wanted to let the committee know that's what we're working towards. So, that's the only update I have, mayor.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else? Councilmember, Jason?
Oh, good. Did you forget?
What?
You looked at me like you forgot my name.
No. Nothing? Tom?[1595.61]